Anna Mary, can I just ask a question? You say that the general fund is positive, but there are encumbrances, so the ending balance is still in the negative?
So, the unexpendable balance is positive at this time. There are purchase orders in place that will make it negative after encumbrances. That is true. But those would cover for the rest of the year, most of those purchase orders. Again, that would align with what the recovery plan is trying as well.
I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Any other questions on A?
With the water fund, are you looking into it? Is that something we'll be able to get about and think about next year?
We're looking at, we gotta look into the billings and the expenditure. I'm not gonna give you a timeline on when we can get into that, because right now, I mean, we're gonna get into that. We're working on the report on accounting methods. We're looking at the recovery plan and appropriations. There's union stuff going on right now as well. So, it is something, it is on our list to look at. I know the city has looked at it as well and into deeper discussions with them. Okay, so they bill quarterly, and it's broken up, the city does, and it's broken up into, I think, three or four sectors. But they get a bill for the entire city monthly. So, you do have a timing issue with that as well. But that's something that we'll, we are, they've kind of dug into, and we need to look at it further.
So, is this like a first-time kind of timing issue? Or is this something that happens every year?
I would need to look at before I say yes or no, because I don't wanna say yes and then I'm wrong. So, it wasn't one of the, it's not one of the original negative funds that put them into fiscal emergency. So, it's not one that we have looked at. And that's like the general fund, the street fund, and the state highway fund. So, I don't know it as well as I do those three right there. Any other questions on A? The next one is B. It's a one-page, it's the revenues. This is a look at the recovery plan estimates versus actual to date from January through July. Again, because that's through the last reconciled month. The target would be 58.3% or higher is what we'd like to see in revenues in total by fund. The first fund on here is the general fund. Overall, it's at 63.7% collected. Property taxes is only received twice a year. We're gonna get the second settlement, which will be lower than the first one in August. They've actually received that. And they should make, I believe, the estimate based upon what I saw that came through for the general fund. Income tax is over target right now, which is good considering April is their largest collection month. Again, intergovernmental is high because we had the large SAFER grant come in in the first part of the year, which was around $400,000. The fees licenses and permits, we've kind of talked about it before, but the building department is the largest portion of that. The permits are much higher this year and actually higher than the last three years based upon needs and permits that have been put in.
So, on the income tax side, is 11.5 million, is that higher than last year? Is like historically trending higher?
I have not looked at that to tell you. I know they do that comparison in the income tax department, but I can't answer that for sure. But we can look at that.
I think, didn't we project a 1% or 2% increase in income tax this year? So, it's probably a little bit higher.
Any other questions about the general fund portion of this? The two other funds that are on this sheet are the street fund and the state highway fund. They are well above the projected 58.3% target, with them both being over 60%. Our next handout is C, and this is the expenditure side of the world. Again, this is based upon what the recovery plan shows and where they are to date at the end of July. And then what the target should be. They should be at target or below at this point with a few exceptions. I'm going to only go over those that exceeds, but doesn't say slightly exceeds. The ones that say slightly exceeds is usually due to a one-time payment, which is throwing off the percentages because 58.3% is based on seven of 12 months. So, page one only has a slightly exceeds. Page two has a slightly exceeds. If you look at page three, there's where we'll start having some discussions. Is everybody on page three? This starts with the fire administration and then the fire department. As you can see, the fire department does show exceeds based upon targeted expenditures at this time. Expenditure is a little high. We've had discussions with the chief. Contractual was high. The last meeting we had is still high right now. I think 80 to 90% of that budget has been spent. We've had many talks with him. We're closely monitoring that. There's been some one-time payments that have come out of here as well. The clothing allowance for the entire year has been paid. Part of the radio leases have been paid out of this. Another area that has exceeded is the street section. The street lights are what's paid out of here. The cost is tracking higher than expected. We are looking into this, whether it's a rate versus usage and why that's an increase for this year compared to previous years. Again, this was an expense we moved into the general fund this year. And then we had a few others slightly exceeds. Again, any questions on this page?
I guess on the fire, do we expect this trend to continue to be, are we still?
We're tightening our belts. We, and we, both April and I have had discussions with the department heads, trying to cut back where we can. We're watching it. Yeah, and we'll be reviewing the purchase orders from here to the rest of the year for that department.
Is that primarily salary? Is that what that fund consists most of?
Most of that is salaries.
So, I don't know if we know, but if the overage continues, I guess in, you know, we obviously have a lot of these, but maybe I'll hold my question. But I guess I wanna know, like, if the overage continues, do we think it's gonna be an issue at the end of the year as far as, it seems like revenue is higher at this point, but is the growth in expenditures higher than the growth in revenues? Do we think we're gonna have an issue at the end of the year? If the trend continues?
We'll be able to tell you more of that when we get to our next meeting. Because then we should be in the last quarter. I don't know that I wanna project that out now because there are some unknown variables.
The other thing that would be nice to see is were expenditures to date are high compared to the estimate? I wonder how they compare to last year?
That would be a hard comparison for '17 because '17 had all those extra payments for invoices that were delayed in payment in previous years that we had to make up in '17. So, that would be a rough comparison between '17 and '18. '18 and '19 would be a decent comparison once we get past this year. But even using '16, that wouldn't even have all of the payments that should've been made in that year. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I get it. I would wonder whether the past due payments could just be, past due account at the beginning of the year could just be subtracted from the expenditure.
That would be a lot of work. By department, it would be a lot of work on our end. In total, I mean, we know what the number was.
By department meaning by the fire, to separate out fire from the rest of our expenditure past due.
In a department, yeah.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah, I was just wondering about that for just fire.
You would still have to go through every one of them. So, it went in less than the load. It's still, it would be the same load in my mind to do even one department.
Did the, I don't know if it comes across this council, but did the, I think we got a new fire chief, and I think he was relatively new. And he was living under the old salary of the previous chief that had retired. And I think he was, had not yet had a new contract.
He follows the old contract, but in the old contractor's language, that allows for variances of his salary. And without that in front of me, I can't tell you exactly what that is.
Okay. I was, I guess the issue I was thinking is, is obviously the gentleman that had been, and I don't know the names of the players, but had been in that seat and had, you know, obviously, his salary had risen based on his experience level. And I think the person that came in was, didn't have his experience level, but I think he was being paid at the same rate, at least previously, as the chief that resigned or retired. And I didn't know if that was adjusted, probably downward, to compensate for the lack of experience or, you know, tenure.
I don't know where the old one was versus the new one because we came in with the current chief as it is right now. I can't answer that even. So, somebody from the city would have to answer that.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else on page three of seven? Page four of seven. The recreation department is, shows exceeds. However, bulk of their expenditures is in the summertime. So, you would expect that to actually be exceeding right now. Once we get past the summer month, expenditures from the swimming pool and other rec items if they do more in the summertime, this should fall more in line of the targets monthly. By the next one, we should be more in target. Okay, the non-department one. That one is from their property tax settlements. They have to, what we call gross things up. So, they have to put in the gross amount of property taxes that they have collected. And then on the tax settlement sheet, there are deductions. And this is one of the deductions off the tax settlement sheet. This was higher than expected. This will be something that will have to be adjusted in appropriations before the end of the year. We kind of talked about that one at the last meeting as well. The workers' compensation, non-department, is really more for legal. That's for workers' comp. We're looking to potentially move that into the legal department. But we're working with the city auditors office. We'll work with them on that one.
Is that premiums or is that like a settlement payment or something?
No, not a settlement payment. It's for attorney fees for workers' comp. To defend the workers.
I'm sorry, you said attorney fees for workers' comp?
They're legal fees, I should say. Not claims. Page five of seven is the state examiner fees. This is where the audit is paid from and the consulting fees. They have wrapped that up and it's been turned in. They have one more invoice on that, and then it'll be completely paid. So, the bulk of the work is done in the first six months on an audit. That's why you're...
So, we expect that to be, I would assume we know what we're gonna pay every year, right? So, we...
They do have a yearly audit, so you're gonna have that.
Yeah.
The election expenses, the real estate tax, non-department, those are also from the property tax settlement sheet. The election expenses and real estate was a little higher than expected on the deductions from the county auditor's office. Outside legal fees are higher than expected. There's been a lot of union work between the two departments that are in negotiations right now on their current contract as well as there'll be some more with going into the next contract period. Which at the end of this year, their union contracts will only go through December of 2018 for both of the larger departments, police and fire.
So, I work with firms a lot. I know those fees can ramp up quickly. Do we, do we need to adjust what we think is realistic here? I mean, I don't know what the amount of work that's going involved, but it's not in my experience. It can be expensive quick.
So, what we will do, as financial supervisor and what we have been doing, is we look at each one of these. And so, some of these that are small, we will permit the city to move appropriations between some line items without coming to the commission because it doesn't change the total bottom figure at all. So, yes, as we move closer towards the end of the year, we're gonna be looking to clean some of these up.
On that same page, the insurance, non-department, that's a one-time payment. There's no more payments coming out of there. That's usually done in the first part of the year. So, that one won't increase anymore.
The real estate tax, non-department, is that the one you're talking about?
No, the insurance, non-department, the second one from the bottom.
Did you go with the real estate?
No, I talked about, real estate, I put that with the election expenses. That's both from the county settlement sheets.
So, what does that mean?
They're deductions from the county settlement.
Okay, so that's maxed out, and that's gonna be reduced as monies come in.
The real estate tax one?
Yeah.
No, they have one more settlement, so there'll be more expenditures. This is one that'll have to be adjusted as well.
Okay, so we just had a low estimate there?
Mm-hmm, based on prior estimates. That takes us through the general fund. Other than the debt service on page six of seven, there's only one more payment left, which will be within the confines of the appropriations there. We've looked at that. Page seven of seven is where you have your street and state highway funds. As you can see, the street is fine as of right now. The state highway fund, they did have an old bill come in for SALT. They were told by us to make the payment. We'll be working with the city auditor's office to potentially move those out of this fund entirely to other street funds that they have. So, we're working, we'll be working with them on that. Questions on the expenditures?
So, is there a total?
There is for a general fund on page six of seven. No, because we did a 5.5%.
That's a very small thing, but the word recovery's misspelled in the 2018 recovery plan. I think that's been out there for a while, so I'm kind of a spelling snob. So, I apologize.
D is the reconciliation that we provide. This is as of July, which is the last month that's been reconciled by the city. You can see all the banks and then the adjustments to the bank balance. We're still catering a reconciling item that's still being researched, but it's staying more consistent.
That's the type of asset that we're...
Yes.
So, that $68,953 is just a deposit in transit?
Yes. Well, it's a positive receipt. They just haven't posted it till next month. So, it's not really a positive transit they got it. They just have to...
Right. Got you.
And then there's a last piece behind there.
Okay, the last thing that, well, not the last thing, but the next thing you should have, it should have appendix D. That's the first page. And what this is, this is documentation regarding an OPWC grant. This is regarding Forest Avenue. And part of the duties of this commission is to authorize the city to enter into any new debt. So, I provided this to you. The second page will have the promissory note that the city is required to sign and submit back to OPWC in order to get the project, you know, started as far as going out for design and bid. If you look back at that appendix D, you can see in the middle of the page how much of this is a grant and how much of this is a loan. So, it's 100% grant. And how this works is the city will have to pay, if you look under section B, the estimated cost, the engineering and the design, the city will have to pay that portion so they can tap into this loan in order to cover that portion. Then OPWC will pay the full $424,000. And then depending on how much the actual bid and the cost of the project is, then they could possibly dip into the $282,000.
So, of the total estimated cost, to make sure I understand, you're saying we're only on the hook for the 62?
No, the city for sure has to pay the 62 and the 25.
25?
And then they have projected construction costs at 620. So, in a perfect world, if that was the true construction cost, OPWC would pay the $424,200.
Wrong, wrong.
Right. But it all, again, all depends on what the bids come back at. So...
How many bids do we get typically?
I don't know how much, how many bids they usually go out for.
Joe, how many bids do they normally get?
Well, we advertise and we offer newspapers and sometimes we'll get six, seven, eight bids.
Is there a requirement, a number of bids that you have to...
And Joe, I'm trying to remember if any overage or matching funds, is this eligible for CDBG money?
It's already included in that.
So, if we have the $282,800, we would use some from CDBG?
We have $100,000 allocated for that. That does go in for a salary now. Re-agreement with the state.
I thought that was the case. So, every three years, we can apply for community development block grant funds. And in this calendar year, we asked for $100,000 so that we could use for matching funds for street repair. And so, $100,000 is allocated for this project.
Do we know what getting funds?
That is for sure. The $100,000 is for sure. That has to be approved. We had to submit the projects that we wanted to do in order for those CDBG funds to be approved.
So, is that in the 424, too?
No, so, the 424,200 is from Ohio Public Works Commission grant. Tell me if I'm wrong, Joe. Then there's a possibility of us having to pay $282,800. And $100,000 of that is already allocated from community development block grant funds. So...
So, of that amount, we already have secured $100,000 of funds?
So, now we're down to $182,800.
Not to say when we go up, except that's...
Unless it goes up, yeah.
Could go up, too, right?
It could be.
So, when do we get the 100?
And we don't ever get the 100. We submit the bill to Hamilton County Community Development, and they pay it. We never hold the money. They hold the money and we submit those bills. And they pay the contractor or whatever.
So, we're gonna get the note for 282,800, and then say we get the 100. What happens next?
Then I guess we're 182...
We use the $100,000 first as where we use any...
Okay, so we're, we're drawing on the 282. And as we need it, and if we don't need it, then whatever we borrow, we borrow.
Right. This would be, this would be the maximum.
So, what happens if it goes over?
Well, they'll have to go out for bid. And I would think, depending, and Joe, I'm just gonna defer to Joe here. If it went over, the estimate, I don't know if it would go back out for bid again. They could reject all the bids.
Right. If construction costs, you have to come up with, how long you go over, never would we, we would reject them.
Okay.
And then we bid.
Forgive me, I'm not a construction guy. So, let's say they come in and say, all right, it's gonna cost us 650, or the 707, and it ends up costing, and they go over. Can they go over, or do we have to know?
They can not go over unless we approve. And they should also...
Okay.
That's after they accept the bid, though. The city has to accept the bid first.
So, when there's, when there's change orders, then how does that process work?
And it'll have to come through us first. We have to approve the warrant and order to do a change.
Right, so say you have $100,000 in change orders. How does that affect the math here?
You're only gonna get with the, you're only gonna get grant money up to what they approved.
Right, so we're gonna, we're gonna have to come up with the 100, and maybe the 100 we get, it's just say, just for argument's sake that we get $100,000 in change orders, then we're gonna have 282,800 on the note.
So, it's an issue because of 282. Because of 282. So, you get the $100,000 in grant. You get 282, you get a credit facility.
Right, and hundreds are cushioned, but, you know, I, again, knowing how projects could go sometimes, there could be a lot of change orders. Unexpected things come up, what have you, that all of a sudden we're like, we're too far into this. I'm just kind of playing devil's advocate.
Yeah, but I don't think that's...
What if, are we prepared for the what? Are we prepared for the what?
I would just say we always estimate the project cost on a high end when we apply for the grants and that. And I can say, I guess, over the past 14 years, we've done maybe $8 million worth of projects. Knock on wood, we've never gone over.
Good to hear. Thank you.
So, next question, sorry, is the 282 included in our forecast, or...
It's not included in the recovery plan, the general fund, because, remember, the other one we brought to the commission, it will not be paid out of the general fund. The amortization for this and the yearly payments will be paid out of a street-like fund. So, it's not built into the street. It's not built on a state highway. Permissive, the permissive fund, which is a fund we're not talking about with the commission as far as emergency, is the fund that is typically handling those payments. And this is a 0% interest loan for 30 years. I think it's like $8,000 a year. So, but this is a necessary step for the city to take and sign this document before anything else can move forward with OPWC. So, it would take a roll call vote and approval for the city to enter into this. That doesn't mean that they're going to borrow all of this. It's just a formality, and it's there for what they do need. This is maximum.
And where, I'm sorry, maybe I'm missing it. Where are the terms of the note?
Let's see, the 0%.
Are you looking for the 0%?
Okay, in the payment period?
30, 30 calendar?
Okay, right in the middle.
Right in the middle, 30 years.
Sorry, I should have borrowed that for you.
No, that's all right. I just knew it was in here somewhere.
Right in the middle.
So, it's...
Yeah, okay.
$94,000 a year.
So, there's two, and there's two payments a year. It's two payments a year typically. Yeah, too far in the hole now. That's correct.
Right.
Okay, so if you borrowed the 282,800, divide by 30, divide by 2, that's your payment?
Right.
Okay, straight one, straight four.
The actual construction, the dates, I don't believe I gave you this, but this is not a project that's even looking to be completed until the end of '19. So, then it's gonna be later in 2020 before they make their first payment.
Okay, what are we, what are we doing? I guess, as a, somebody that lives close to Forest, what's happening on Forest?
It's Forest Avenue from Highland down to Norwood Avenue.
What are we doing?
The Big Hill.
It's reconstruction, isn't it?
We're redoing the road?
Yes.
And the curbs and all that?
You're doing curbs, yes. Sidewalks, water mains, the whole thing, just like Marion Avenue was done?
Okay.
Sidewalks.
Everything, sidewalks, curbs, water, streets. Invited.
If you come down from the north end and you turn right on Highland and turn right on Forest Avenue on your way over to Rook or somewhere, you'll see why it needs.
Oh, yeah, definitely, yeah.
Every time I get down there, my passenger on the right side complains to me.
My grandkids come up like, uh, 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 we're a mini city.
My kid's kinda like it. It's like a real estate.
Oh, is that the real street one?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I think I got new suspension off that street. Yeah. That's a doozy. Great?
Please?
I said great, but it sounds good to me.
Yeah, I mean, exactly.
Questions on this? We will need to have a motion made to accept the promissory note for the city of Norwood identified as CB10V.
One more quick question.
Sure.
If we cannot make the payments on this notes, and I don't see that happening, is there a guarantor? Is there a secondary? Is there anything like that?
I believe it works if they go to the county auditor. He won't send you the money. You'll take the money out of the back.
They'll take it out of the back.
Okay, so, all right.
Oh, yeah, they got first dibs.
Even like 20 years down the road, right?
Yeah.
They'll take it.
Got it. Thank you.
I'll make the motion to accept the promissory note for the city of Norwood, CB10V. Is there a second?
Second?
We could take a roll call vote.
Mm-hmm. Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Council President Lake, yes. Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Vandahar?
Yes.
Ms. Longenecker?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Who she cares?
Okay, the last thing that you have in your packet, um, is, uh, she, the top, uh, has Kramer and Associates Group. Um, this is just to let you know, uh, that the, there is a study being done of the fire department, um, their facilities, also staffing. Um, and we are very fortunate to have Mr. Kramer in the audience with us today. And Anna Mary and I met with him for a, a small amount of time this morning, um, and he is willing to come and speak to this commission once he has completed that study. Um, so, we're not gonna talk anything about it now, because he's still in the draft stages of that. But, just to let the commission know that there is a study being done, um, and also, the city is anticipating doing a study also for the, as regards to the police department.
So, what's the scope? Is this, is comparing our department to others?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Good.
Quick question, where are the, the monies to pay for that? Where are they buried?
They'd be coming out of legal fees.
Okay, great.
What's the, what do you think, what do you think will be finished?
About mid-month, in September. About a month from now.
Okay.
I think that's a great idea, by the way.
Will it be police departments all over the state, or just in this area, or?
I can't, I can't speak to that, I've not spoken to that gentleman.
Do you wanna give an update on that?
Sure, I can do that. Uh, so, as part of them being within fiscal emergency, we've talked about a report on accounting methods that has to be completed, which is really looking at their controls, uh, compliance, um, things that are in place for monitoring, things like that. It, it covers many, many sections. My staff and I have been in here, uh, we've started that, we've had our preliminary talks across the entire city, uh, so, it's not just the, uh, the city auditors level or mayor. We've invited all department heads, uh, to know, start to end, wha- what they do on a daily basis within purchasing, and cash disbursements, receipts, and all of that. Uh, we've done the first interviews, uh, if you've looked at one of those, you can go out on our website, City of Niles has been done, and a report on accounting month, it's very extensive. So, what we first have to do is really get what they do. We have to write, we talk with them, then we have to put it in a written format. Uh, and you can ask anybody that sat in those meetings, we ask all kinds of questions, Mr. Gere is in almost every one of them with us, uh, even the most minute details. Now, they might not be all in the report, but we really wanted to know from every department what they really do, and how you get from point A to point Z. Uh, we are very detailed. So, we've done that, we're working on those write-ups, on the, we call them the narrative portions of that. We will be going back, and we have with some, on, uh, what they, what we thought they said, or what we understood versus what they were trying to tell us. 'Cause if you, if I went to your work and asked, asked you what you did from the start of the day to the end of the day, you would also forget. I, I do, too, even in my processes. So, we go back and look and go, oh, we have a hole, what's the hole? So, we're still in that process, trying to make sure that the narratives are really what they do on a day-to-day basis throughout those, uh, sections of the report. And there are very many of them. Um, then, we will be allowing them to look at that, and then, we'll be doing our recommendations. So, we've gotten through the first part, we're working through, making sure we have the process right, uh, we do testing with that as well, um, on the compliance and what... I, I keep telling them, I'm from Missouri, you have to show me. You just can't tell me, you gotta show me. Uh, and I think I said that a lot when we had these department meetings. So, it's a very in-depth process, it takes a lot of time, uh, and we've had a lot of staff down here, to where people walked in the door and go, whoo, that's a lot of auditors. So, um, they've got to know most of our staff throughout this process. I have been in almost every one of those, uh, initial meetings, uh, asking most of the questions, and, uh, my staff is now working to fine-tune that. So, that, that's kinda where we are right now. Uh, it just takes time. Once you see these reports, you'll understand, uh, 'cause we wanna make sure that we understand what they're doing, we don't misunderstand something, uh, and we get exactly what they do. And then, looking at, see, what are some areas of, um, uh, making things maybe better, or improving an area, so...
May I ask what, what type of, I used to do a lot of that kinda stuff, so, when you get to the point where you do the narratives, obviously, that's when you test the controls themselves. Could you speak a little bit more to that process, what tools you use, how extensive that part of it is? And then, if you deem a control is, um, you know, ineffective, typically, you wouldn't test it. I, and I guess, tell me where I'm wrong. You wouldn't test it, then, if it is effective, did, by design, you would then test it in some sort of sample, and then, you would report those tests. And then, are those tests gonna be the results of those included in that report?
Ooh, yeah, that's right.
Sorry, that was A, B, C, and D.
That's okay. So, I used to be on the audit side of the world. So, I used to be on our audit side of...
Me, too, that's why I'm...
Yeah.
Talking south here.
Now, I'm on the consultant side. So, there's no parameters, like the auditing side, that says that thou shalt have a sampling, or whatever, and you, and, and you have to fulfill those for your audit risk and all that. So, we can kinda customize to what we need to do, to make sure that they're fulfilling what they're, they're stating. Uh, so, the first is, we look to see what they tell us. So, I'm looking to see, the, when they're talking, I'm looking, okay, that's a control, there's a sign-off here, like, invoice is okay to pick. That's a great example. So, we, we write those down, and like, I have one now, she's downstairs, looking at some of that stuff. I'm looking to see what they say they do, they do. So, we'll pull a sample, whatever large amount we want, and we see if that's actually what's being done. And maybe one department does it differently than the other, and we're gonna notate that as well. So, I don't have anything that says I'm gonna go pick so many, um...
Okay, there's no sampling tool, or it says that, listen, you need to do twenty-five, or you need to do... Is it, is there any, I wanna say, risk, but is there any, because obviously, that's judgmental, as far as the size of the sample?
Correct.
Is there any risk to, I guess, you, by maybe not choosing a large enough sample, and having that be an issue later, or?
Uh, it's not really an audit report, like, for their financials.
Right.
So, we're just trying to make sure, the biggest thing that we're trying to do is to document what they have, and then, see examples of that. So, and, and, and some of the areas, like receiving and expenditures, I'm gonna look a little more. But, I'm gonna get examples across the board of what they do do. So, like, I would have a meeting, and, because they're sitting right there, the fire department, and they said, well, we, you know, monitor purchase orders, and we monitor, uh, that I still have enough. And then, they send it, I'm like, okay, send me what you do, so I can see it. Uh, and, and, and we kinda did that as we went along. I'm like, okay, you did this, okay, can you send me an example?
Right.
Did this, send me an example. And then, I'm gonna go and pull my own from what's downstairs. So, a lot of it, though, if there is some monitoring or controls at the department level, I went and we gathered that, and then, we're looking at what's happening in the finance department, whether it be the treasurer, or the city auditor's office, and doing a little more testing in that area. If there's some risk that we're, that we're gonna see a few, not see a few issues, there's gonna be a few issues no matter what.
Sure, yeah.
Uh, I'm more concerned at the big picture, and, and, and are we doing what we really say we are? And is there areas in there that, that what they're doing is fine, but can we make it a little cleaner, a little better? Does that help?
Yeah, so, you might do, you might test five or ten in one area that's lower risk, another area might do fifty in an expenditure, or something like that, and it's...
Yeah.
Okay.
It's all judgmental.
Yeah, great.
But I don't have to...
And then, the output at the end, or, or recommendations, out of all that detail, on, think about this, do this, add this, all that kinda stuff?
Yes.
And that'll all be in that one report?
Yeah, it's set up, like, I talked to them, it's set up with the ideal, brief description is for the section, and then, it has their higher advice code and higher administrative code sections that apply, and maybe not all of them. It has the narrative of how the process works for the city, and then, it has the comments, as we call them, at the last part of every section, and every section is divided.
Whose comments? Your comments, or their, their responses?
Other statements.
Other statements.
Okay. Do they have the, do they have the right to, I know, no recommendation letters I've written, that, that the client, or whoever you're kinda looking at, always has the, the ability to comment back, or have their opinion somehow incorporated?
So, in this, that doesn't appear, but, what I think is...
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I mean...
We will sit down with them and go over the narrative. We really wanna make sure that's right. And we'll actually sit down with them and go over the comments potentially before. So, maybe there is something that we missed throughout the process, they have the opportunity there. But, once our office releases that report, there's no coming back with it. What happens then is, it is released, it comes to the commission, and then, we will be recording on a regular basis on where those comments stand, and have they cleared anything, are they working on things?
Right.
Uh, or, or they cleared something, and, and it's good to go. They not only have to show a five-year forecast eventually, that shows all positives to come out, they have to clear the comments within that report on accounting methods as well. So, if you do one and not the other, that can still keep you in emergency, 'cause you wanna make sure the controls and compliance is set, so you don't have the same issues, hopefully, that you just ran to get you in a emergency.
Right, and once we get down that road, you give them the comments, they start incorporating the comments and those new procedures?
Yeah.
Do we then go back and look to make sure that, kind of, that's cleared, like, okay, you are doing this? Okay.
And okay, in the ongoing part of the meeting, so...
And then, are there, those narratives, do they, is a policy that comes out of this, that, that will be formal SOPs written as a result of your findings, or tweaks, or?
If you go out and look in a lot of our, um, report on accounting methods, our policies and procedures are a big recommendation, uh, that we have for most cities, most villages.
Is to document?
To document.
Okay, but it's not a requirement?
Uh, it, it's one of our comments, it has to be worked upon.
Okay, so, they, if you say you need a policy, or it needs to be written, needs to be shared?
Yes.
Then, you won't check off on it until it's done and placed, and distributed, and all that? Great.
And it might require council to modify practice, it, it'll vary.
No, um, thank you, I appreciate you going in that level of depth, and I'm really looking forward to that, and I think that's gonna be a great asset, going forward, to see where we've been, and where we need to go.
Uh, and with the policies and procedures, we really have the entities bring them to us before they take them to approvals, because if we don't like it, before it goes through approval, we're gonna tell them then, and stop the process there, and say, okay, we need to beef this up, and we have this in there, and we were looking for this, and it wasn't there, or whatever the case may be.
Terrific. Thank you.
Did you wanna comment on anything about the dispatch center?
Um, I'm gonna defer the dispatch center to the mayor. Um, retirees' health care, I'm gonna defer to Ms. Lake. The only thing I'm gonna say as far as the retirees' health care, um, Donald will probably talk more in length about that, but council did take action, uh, to do away with the two plans that were currently in place and replaced with a new one. I know everybody wants to know how much money we're gonna save, and I'm just going to tell you that we cannot project that. I mean, I can tell you what the new plan will cost, but to say for sure how much money they're really gonna save, we're gonna have to see how that works out, because you have to remember that under the two old plans, those folks that are participants have up, and they have two years to submit the plans. So, we're gonna be paying out still some claims under those two plans until sometime in twenty-twenty.
Thank you very much. Uh, our next agenda item is a report from the mayor, if you have.
Thank you. You know, there was a discussion before on outside legal fees. I'm certainly not complaining about the state, I wouldn't do that. Part of our, part of the issues that we face is, we, we go into negotiations, like with police and fire, they have the right to go to mediation and arbitration. If it goes to arbitration, the arbitrator rules, and that's it, we have to do it. Plus, there's, that's forty-one-seventeen of the higher advice code, one-twenty-four of the higher advice code of civil service. So, we, we try to follow civil service plus forty-one-seventeen. Now, I will say this, in the next three months, we will be in arbitration, uh, mediation, and the Court of Common Pleas. Depending on how those things go, will depend on how the city's gonna go down the road. If we prevail and stabilize our operating costs, or lower it somewhat, we should be all right. If we do not, then, we're gonna have issues. And we're doing everything we can, we're exploring, we've obtained Clementson Nelson, we're exploring every option we can. This is not a social battle, this is a financial battle. I mean, we're, we're being hit with all kinds of complaints and everything. But, our responsibility is to lower the operating cost, and yet, maintain the level of service for the city. And that's what we're doing. Uh, it's in process now, we'll see what the courts bring, we'll see what the arbitration brings, we'll see what the unfair labor practices bring, and that will kinda determine, because that's where our cost is at. And, it's, it's not a pleasant thing, but with something that we have the responsibility to do. A former finance chairman said on more than one occasion, we can't, we will not survive if we keep up the course that we're on. And that's what we're trying to stop. And you just don't go say, we're not gonna do it anymore. We don't have that option. Uh, nobody has that option. The option is, is that we go down the path that we think that we can have some prevail in, or we, we let it go. On the other hand, for the bargaining units, this is not their goal, or their job, is to do the best they can for their, their members. We understand that. Sometimes, they fail to understand, our job is to do the best thing we can for the survival of the city. That's what this comes to. And in the next three months, it will, it will come into play just how successful, or where it stands. And so, when you see the increase in outside legal fees, that's part of it. And like mentioned before, we had, uh, the individual come in and do a study for the fire department, we have an individual coming in, and an IT coming in to do a study on the police department. So, we can say that we have totally evaluated this, and we have totally looked at it. And so, that's, that's the course that we're on. As far as the nine-one-one system, I've had a hard time getting numbers, but I finally got numbers. We are looking at what's the best financial solution, and the best service solution for the city for nine-one-one. I've made no bones about it, I think we should keep nine-one-one. If the cost is too high, makes it cost prohibitive, it goes. That's it, I mean, it's, it's not that difficult. Offhand, just right off the top of his head, I was talking to Chief Yerden, he thinks, he said, what do you think it'll be, cost saving it will be? And I said, I think it will cost us a hundred-and-twenty-five to a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars more if we go with the county. Uh, uh, you know, I would accept that, to keep that nine-one-one center. As we know, the sales tax increase that was proposed by the county has now been pulled. And they're looking at a twenty-eight million to thirty million dollar deficit. They're gonna make up that deficit somewhere, and I believe, and several others believe, it's gonna come back to the nine-one-one, will increase the cost. I can also tell you that the information we received, one department wanted to buy our PSAP system, Public Seven, Anthony Point, well, you can't sell it. They wanted to buy it 'cause they wanna start their own dispatch. So, I mean, if, if it's gonna become cost prohibitive, or raise their cost of operation, i- i- if, if something isn't done to raise the funds, because they, the county will, in order to survive, raise their cost, they don't have much choice. So, we are exploring any, any way we can to either stabilize or reduce our cost. We are also reviewing how the city does economic development. Uh, Joe and I've been working on that for months, and we're, we're, we can almost see the light at the end of the tunnel. And so, those are the areas that we've been working. Like I said, it will, it will come to fruition, uh, more in the next few months, on the direction the city's gonna go. It's not, I, I'm not asking for a pity party, it's not easy, it's something that we have... It's not, I'm not asking for a pity party, it's not easy, it's something that we have to do, we have to look at.
Sure, I have a couple of questions. So on the nine-one-one, uh, I know the city of Cincinnati was looking at making updates, was that just the city? Uh, toward when we had that charge a case of that young kid that died? Is that something that's driven by the county or is that just driven by the city?
No, that's, that's, that's a city issue.
City, okay.
The city had, I, they're not saying, I just keep my mouth shut, and let's put it this way, they had really bad issues. And they're, and they're moving to, to, uh, to remedy it. Part of the issue was, is that what we're looking at, system, what we're looking at, will, will have texting nine-one-one. And the other issue, what it will have is, they wanna put information in there. If you call nine-one-one, it'll have your background contact numbers if you submit it to nine-one-one. If, if you dial nine-one-one, we're not able to communicate, if you wanna give the dispatch center information, it will say your name and who the contact person would be and any other medical information that you would like in there.
Okay, and that's the reason I ask, I just didn't know if it was kind of a mandatory update that would affect us and drive our cost up or drop the county's cost?
Well, it, it's actually, you know, it's, right, it, it is, and it's, and it's one of those deals, we keep talking, we've had, we've met with the county, I don't know, ten times, you know, something like that. And so, and I keep saying this, I am a resident, I live here. So I, I wanna, I want service like that. And until you need it, you really don't understand, because when you call nine-one-one, you need a paramedic unit. When you hang up that phone, I guarantee you'll hear the sound in a few seconds. Now, how do we accomplish that and yet keep our, our cost under control? That's the fine line we're working, but we'll have more for you. Uh, I had a conversation with April this morning on an issue, and we're gonna get some information and pass it on to, uh, April and Anna Mary for them to approve. And then what we will be doing is, we will be coming back, and we will probably be requesting a meeting before the next meeting for this commission to approve something and, uh, it's not, not a lot of money or anything. And so you'll have a, we'll lay it out for you then, we'll have people to lay it out for you then. I would like to do it, I would like to present some things to council first, but after talking to April, one of the things we're gonna depend on, we're gonna have to come through the commission first, and we will. And we'll, we'll keep you informed of whatever we can discuss.
Okay, um, like my second question was related to, you talked about arbitration and all that, so.
Can I make a comment before?
Yeah, sure.
Lieutenant Rankin did come and do a presentation to city council about the nine-one-one system. And there are some required upgrades, particularly around training and all that stuff and written policies, and he is working on those. He's attended training sessions and he's, um, doing those kinds of upgrades. So not, I don't want you to think that there aren't any upgrades that are needed, um, but he is working on those things that aren't costing us a lot of money right now, that are probably within the budget, but, um, looking at a system upgrade.
And county will train our people.
Okay, and that'll be included, the cost of that'll be included, okay. And then in the realm of like arbitration, you know, we talked about, uh, pointing Kramer and associates to help us with the analysis. We're gonna do a similar one to, on the police side. So, did, who recommended those particular people or companies? I just wondered from like an arbitration's perspective, like, could the police and fire say, well, we wanna do our own study? You know, is that really an independent resource if you guys appointed them? I'm just trying to think down the road, is it through the arbitrator, is it through?
Well, the, the Clemens Nelson did the research on, on, we're bringing a guy in from UC and an IT guy. And Mr. Kramer is known all over.
Um, yeah, I'm not trying to.
No, 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 he's known as an expert.
Sure.
I, we know what the definition of, of an expert is, but he's, you know, he's been known all over for that, so he does nationwide and everything. And he was recognized, and I think he went over to the fire department. Now you'd think, you know, here comes an individual with a lot of experience, he's gonna come in and do an evaluation of the fire department. Well, you'd think the fire department would be on the defensive, oh, no, we don't want this. He was treated with all the respect in the world and given all the cooperation in the world from the police department. And I feel quite certain that the, the police will do the same thing.
Sure, I didn't mean any disrespect.
No, no, I know you don't.
It's like a chess game, right?
Right, no, no, I understand that, because when you ask somebody, I don't know what his record is. Now arbitrators, uh, that's another thing. Some people know, they, they've all got a history. And when you choose an arbitrator, you don't know what you're gonna get.
Okay.
And they don't, you know, when we bring an arbitrator in, they, they, you know, they wanna bring an arbitrator in from New York, eighteen hundred dollars a day, you know? That's another thing, but with these individuals that do the study, we don't know what they're gonna do. I don't know what they're gonna do, Joe doesn't know what they're gonna do, they're appointed and they do it, so who knows where it's gonna go? But you can say that one way down the road that you gave it a shot, and as far as I'm concerned, the fire department was very professional, you had a nice conversation, you know? And I, and I'm sure that Chief Kramer, police chief Kramer, will treat whoever the individual is that comes in to do the UC study or do the study from UC, they'll, he'll be treated with respect to. So I mean, there's, there's just, that's where there is some professionalism going on, so.
Okay, good to hear, okay.
I have a quick question. If you don't use the, um, the city for nine-one-one, does that mean that you use your fire department to accomplish that or?
No, no, we'd use, uh, we'd go to the county. Instead of, so, the bad thing about that is, uh, we'll say, and I keep using this example, if you get a line of thunderstorms coming through and we have a lot of lightning and everything and trouble like that, you dial nine-one-one, and we only have the county? What do you think your chances are of getting through? Slim and none. And on other cases, there, there's non-emergency numbers that they know, and if they can't get through nine-one-one, they'll light up those other numbers and somebody's gonna have to answer. And there's entry of warrants and date entry and all that kinda stuff that has to be, so it's, it's complicated. I'll give you another example, maybe I said this. If, if you, if you're in Norwood and you call our, our comm center and say, well, there's a person injured in an auto accident in front of Wendy's, county's gonna say, what Wendy's? Or they might have to put it in that you get to find out. Our people know where Wendy's is at. And if they say, he's running over Cameron towards four or seven, they know where it's at. I mean, it's small, but it's, it's important. But we'll have a report for you. After I check with April and clear through the command staff, um, I'll, you know, I'll follow their advice and we'll go from there. And we'll bring you totally up to date.
I have a couple of questions. How is, are these, the fire and the police studies gonna impact, I know the contracts run through the end of the year. How are these studies gonna impact the negotiations themselves on a new contract?
It, it, we don't know. It's, it depends on what it says. Here, here's the thing, if we ask for the study and we get the study no matter what direction to go, we're gonna share it. They'll get a copy. We're not gonna do a study and have it say, well, it's not, doesn't necessarily favor us and we're not gonna use it, we'll use it.
Well, say for example, and I'm thinking it might be favorable for the city, say, just for argument's sake. And they say that, okay, you're overstaffed, you're, you have too many full-time versus part-time. I would like to hope that that would be factored into our side of negotiation and say, well, based on this study, we're overstaffed and therefore we don't think you need this or that.
I, that, that's a good point. Here's the problem. Arbitrators, they don't care what you say. I believe, Joe, we had one mediator that says to the city, you're taxing me right legally, you're right, go on against him. And our people went, what's this? They get a, they, they all got, and Clemens Nelson will look at it, what's, what's the history of this individual, what's the history of this individual, don't make any difference. Once they get it, when they say it, it's gospel. And that's because of forty-one seventeen. And that's what I find sometimes conflicting. We are supposed to follow, you know, keep our finances in order, and the state comes in and says, you have to do this, you have to do that, you shouldn't spend it on this and you spend it on that. When in some cases, these cities don't have any control. They just don't. You think they do, this is not like private business. Sometimes there's a, there's a, um, there's a cooperation between the bargaining units and the city. But when, I've been through this before, and last time we were in Festival Mercy, and there was no forty-one seventeen at that time. The only way the city got out of it was they cut, and the employees got reductions. And the reason that was is because we don't have a product, our product is service. So that's where your cost is gonna be, and that's where the reduction's gonna have to come. It's, 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 but now with forty-one seventeen, it's a different situation where it's kind of out of our control. You know, if we do the best we can and, and we're gonna, we're moving in a couple of directions that never have been done before, but we have to make every opportunity to do what we can to reduce our costs. And I, you know, I recorded one individual who was finance chairman before said, we can't keep it up. We brought in three thousand jobs, two, three hundred million dollars in development. We can't, we gotta look at it different ways. But like I said, those bargaining units, they look at two things. They will look at payment, they will also look at safety for themselves, and they will also look at providing services for citizens. There's where the differences come in, what we can afford and what we've got to pay.
Does forty-one seventeen dictate that either you take the city's plan or their plan? And, and there's nothing in between, it's either A or B?
Right, if they go to the arbitrator, that's about what you get. And sometimes they'll, they'll, they'll try to make a deal, uh, to, to work it out. But so far, and I think, um, it's always been this way, and when you start changing like that, the bargaining units start to think, oh, oh, man, they're gonna get us, you know? And so they do what they believe is in best interest of their bargaining unit. And, and do I think they kinda take things into consideration again? If they do what's in best interest of their bargaining unit, that's what they do.
Sure.
Uh, they kinda get irritated with me, but I'm getting irritated with them, they're doing what they're supposed to do. They're supposed to defend their people and give the best they can for them. Our job is to keep the doors open and the lights on. And when you keep bringing in business and you keep bringing in business and you're not, you don't see, you know, you don't see it growing, you think, you know, and I'm, and I'll be honest with you, and I'm, I'm sure you know this, I'm not a spreadsheet guy, I'm just not. But I've been around long enough to know, I think, what works and what doesn't work. And I think like the individuals say, we have to start looking at things differently. It's, it's just, are we, are we, we're not gonna go anywhere. And I'll say this again and again, I live here.
So do we.
Yeah, so when I called police and when I called paramedic, I'm a frequent flyer, they've been to my house a damn many, they've been up there a lot. I want them to, I want them to say anything. It's not that I don't care, but I, if I had, I wish I had a solution other than to say, we have to lower our operating costs. I'm open to suggestions, if somebody's got one, let me know, but I don't have a lower our operating cost any other way. So if you got any ideas, the state layer wisdom on me because, you know, we've, we've done everything we can.
Well, I think too, when you talk about outside legal fees, when you do a study and there are favorable components to us in negotiation, that's where our attorney earns his money, is debating that and arguing that with their attorneys and saying that this, you know, this is a factor, this is evidence. And I think, you know, if you need as much, I mean, as much outside attorneys as you need to battle and to make those points and to litigate, I, you know, I would welcome that, because, I mean, if there's evidence that leans our side that says, you know, they should, they should not get this perk or we should get this perk, then that, that needs to be, uh, addressed. So I guess that's kind of, uh, I respect you commenting on that. I, I did have one other comment too on the dispatch. I, I, I heard you say that, you know, you're afraid that because they have a thirty million dollar deficit, that it's gonna come out of the nine-one-one if we were to go to there. I guess I, I questioned that, I mean, it's, it's gotta come from somewhere, and maybe it comes from putting a sales tax on the ballot, maybe it comes from them cutting other areas, but I guess I, without any evidence or any sources, I don't necessarily agree that, okay, this, this big chunk's gonna come out of dispatch. So I, I guess I would ask, what is that based on? Is that by talking to the commissioners, is that, what is your source for thinking that's gonna be the case?
I don't think it's all gonna come out of dispatch, it's gonna be spread out all over.
Right.
Do I think there'll be an increase in, for the service dispatch that he's calling, yes. And I, I was told that from downtown.
Who, who, when you say downtown, who is that?
In, in the county courthouse.
They probably don't know.
They're gonna, they're gonna have to spread it around.
Sure.
Part of it will be, not, not all of it will come from here. They're, they're gonna cut down all over, you'll probably see, for the first time, you might, you might even see the sheriff's department cut. You, you, you'll see a lot of cuts, but it, it'll happen because they don't have any choice. How much it's gonna be, I don't know.
Yeah, cause I mean, I don't know how much dispatch is, is a total budget, but.
You know.
I can't imagine it's a, a significant portion of their, of their total budget. If it's one percent, then.
Isn't it, it's, it's all, if you got a balance, make a sales tax increase.
That's all.
It's awesome.
Yeah, but it doesn't mean it won't come back, I mean, it's, it's just, it was kind of a knee-jerk addition.
Yeah, yeah.
And in fact, but, yeah, I mean, I just don't think we have the facts to say that, uh, without having financial statements and saying, well, how much of the county's budget is dispatch and what impact does that have dollar-wise on whether or not we keep our dispatch or we move to them?
I'll make it part of the record now, it'll go at one to two dollars a call.
And what does that, what does that mean in terms of, of dollars, I mean, that's.
It could mean a hundred and fifty thousand a year.
Yeah, but that's, that's your opinion though, I mean, there's no factual.
I don't have any facts today.
Yeah, I'm just saying, we can't, we can't say that without having some meat behind that and saying, here's the impact.
If we, if we have nineteen thousand calls a year, that's why we're basing our decision. The information's coming from our dispatch center and our records, how many calls we get, how many nine-one-one calls we get, how many non-emergency calls we get, how many dispatches we send. You know, there was rumors going out that every time they sent two cars, you got two calls, that's not true. One call, one car, two cars, it's one call. So we know what the estimated costs are gonna be, we know it. That's why we're basing our decision on the information that we hear, that dispatches that we send, that we make and the calls that we receive and what the county charges. That's how we made our estimates. We sat down with the county and said, we had so many nine-one-one calls, we had so many nine emergency calls, we had so many queries, we had so many this. What do you charge for, and, and here are the numbers. That's how we came to those decisions.
But you don't know what a potential increase would be for them to get out of the deficit, that's my point.
No, 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 I didn't say that, I said.
Well, that's what I said, and you're, you're saying that it might be a dollar or two.
We don't need to be, this is, this is.
I don't think we did, I just think you look at what the actuals are now compared to what we would pay. Look at the pros and cons and know this is out there.
Yeah.
Right, say, hey, sure, we know it's probably gonna go up. That would weigh into our fact pattern and our decision, okay, do we wanna move to that level or not? You know, if it's a big variable, it's easier, but if it's a tight variable, then it's a tougher decision.
Sure.
So we'll just wait and see.
Yeah, and I, I would also just, just add this, just to close, is by us, I, I, and I, and I guess I kind, this is just kind of a general question to think about, but because we have our own nine-one-one dispatch, how, how more likely are people to call knowing that, you know, maybe if it's a Hamilton County call, they may not make that call to dispatch? Maybe they're making it because there's a convenience of having our own dispatch and our own nine-one-one.
I never said that.
I didn't say, you did say that, I'm, I'm putting that out there for, for thought, is to say, you know, would we get less calls if we had Hamilton County as a dispatch and say, well, maybe I, I don't need to call them, you know, and maybe it's because their response time's not as good. But maybe I don't need to call them, but I'm calling them because I know they're just down the street. And it's not a big deal for them to come to my house for this item that may not be, I don't wanna say significant enough, but may not be as necessary if they know the county is, is handling the dispatch. And that's it, that's just it.
Well, yeah.
And our thought to speculate on, but I, I, I would just, you know, when you think about the dispatch, having or not. think about the dispatch, have it or not to have it.
Assistant Chief McCabe...
Well, we'll speculate. When we give it to you, we'll give you the numbers.
Yeah, no, I, I, I don't know if there is a, a way to come up with a number like that, but, uh...
Well, it's complicated and it probably comes down to if Norwood wants to spend the money on this or that. I mean, that's what the community's gonna have to decide.
The pros and cons.
Right.
To make it, try to make it.
So I'll turn it over to the city council report.
First of all, the chairs that you're sitting in are nice and new. We did not pay for them. They came from TriHealth, so just to let you know, there were no capital expenditures done. TriHealth was getting new equipment and, yeah, much more comfortable. Council likes them, uh, that came from, uh, council, the clerk of councils, a lot of the offices around the city got new furniture and equipment from TriHealth. And letter was sent from the administration thanking them and council did a resolution thanking them as well. So, just to let you know that. Retirees healthcare plan, healthcare was passed. The two plans will be discontinued as of December 31st, 2018. The new plan will go into effect then on January 1st, 2019. It provides for a yearly one-time payment for each of the recipients. They're, um, before the end of this year, I, I helped to write the plan, so I made myself in charge. I didn't, wouldn't want anybody else to do what I wouldn't do myself. So myself and the clerk of council are responsible the first year for notifying all of the current recipients of the change in plan, letting them know, you know, that they do have two years to complete their submission to be reimbursed under the old plan. But anything as, after December 31st, 2018, they don't need to deal with the old company, which will be a huge, it'll be a whole lot less stress on people. I think the mayor and his wife can attest to that. We did get a bill from them for about a hundred thousand dollars of claims that have been submitted. They assured us, we did pay that. They assured us that the checks would go out within a couple of weeks. It was more like six or seven weeks. Some people got checks of everything that was owed to them, some people didn't. Two dead people got checks. Thankfully, people were honest and they sent them back. We are working through the details of that. I have become a thorn in their side and I, I'm on a first-name basis with those folks because the last thing we want is to not have people get the money that's owed them. The city of Norwood is obligated to pay that. And so, we're working through all of those details. I hesitate to send out the letters about the new plan until we can get these payments settled because I would, I would, it would probably put me over the edge if I knew that I was dealing with all this and then had to deal with a new plan. But we will be sending those out soon. It does make arrangements for a committee to review applications. Three of them are appointed by the mayor. Two of them are going to be elected from the current recipients of the plan. So people can nominate themselves or they can nominate other people. The clerk of council and I then will call the meeting of all of the folks who received letters and we'll have an election of their two representatives and then we will send out the applications. It's a one-page sheet. It just asks the questions, if you were hired before 1975, if you had twenty years or more with the city, list the years, just some basic information. Or I'm married to someone who was eligible for it, or I'm a widow or a widower of someone who was eligible for it, and ask some very, very basic questions. The committee will then review those applications and the committee will decide who is eligible under the terms of the new agreement. I think it'll be way simpler. People will just submit a one-page form and they'll get one check a year and you're done. You don't have to submit any documentation. I really believe it'll be a win-win for everybody. It'll save us money and it'll certainly save the retirees some headaches. So before I go on to the next one, any questions about that? Okay. That was easy. I wanted to make you aware of something else that is gonna take place, cause you all live here and so, in the midst of a fiscal emergency, people are gonna ask, well, how are we paying for all this? Several years ago, Deborah Robinson and I submitted an application for Safe Routes to School. We had to do a travel plan that was, had to be approved by the state that included the number of students in the schools, where they, where their homes are, where they walk to and from school, any potential hazards along the way. That plan took about a year, year and a half to complete. The state did approve it. We were then eligible to apply for grants and we did that for three years in a row. We were successful two years in a row. Really ticked that we didn't get the third year, but we'll be reapplying for that. But basically, we were awarded, after all the engineering costs and all that stuff, there will be about five hundred and, about five hundred and five, five hundred and ten thousand dollars worth of work done in the city of Norwood that will be at no cost to us, all around the schools. So we have combined the two years of grants into one and we bid those out together, which brought the cost in a little bit cheaper. Those, it was estimated, the, the state of Ohio estimated it would be about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars and it came in at five hundred and five. But we still, we have a five hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollar award, so we do have some cushion for those change orders that you talked about earlier. Again, no change order can be approved without going through Mr. Gears. There will be two speed humps in front of Williams Avenue School, there's gonna be some new crosswalks, there'll be new signage at all of the schools on Carthage and Smith and on Sherman Avenue. So the work will begin next week and it should be completed by the end of October. So just to let you know, that construction's going on, it is at no cost to the city. It's all federal money that is funneled through the Ohio Department of Transportation. I attended a pre-construction meeting and made it very clear to them that we had no money and no change order would be approved. That was gonna be over the five hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, so...
Donna, what was the name of that program? I didn't understand what you said.
It's called Safe Routes to School.
Okay.
And it's through the Ohio Department of Transportation, federal funding. So there's all these federal requirements that have to be met. There was a woman from the Ohio Department of Transportation who will be the project manager on site and she is kicking butt and taking names later. I'm sure it will be a project done on time and under budget. We made it very clear. There was a recommendation from the state that some of the pedestrian heads, they would prefer, the flashing lights, they prefer to be solar-powered instead of the ones that were approved. And I said, excuse me, you all approved this plan, are these acceptable? And they said, well, they're acceptable, we just prefer the other ones. I'm like, well, we don't prefer to pay that, so we're just gonna stick with the ones that were approved in the plan if they're still approved. So they, they understand and I really think it'll come in on time and on budget.
Who's doing the work?
I think it's their first time with a federal bid, so their eyes were a little bit big, but there's gonna be like posters required, equal employment opportunity, all that stuff.